Good evening and welcome to the May 12, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Kathryn Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation, and I'll read some points about that in just a moment. It is also being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. If anyone else is recording the meeting, could you please notify us? So this meeting, as I mentioned, is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL 30A 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it is in progress may do so by calling the phone number And the conference ID number is 441-367-104, and then you press pound. So the ID number is 441-367-104, pound. You can also join us via Zoom teleconference if you're on a computer. The link for the Zoom is on the agenda, which is posted on the town website. So if you go to the town website and you go to Meetings, Agendas, and Minutes, and then you find the agenda for this planning board meeting, which is right at the top of the list. There's a link right at the top of the agenda, and if you click on that link, you can also join this meeting via Zoom. Despite our best efforts, we might not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So all this being said, I'd also like to ask everyone who is part of the meeting to please mute your phones if you're not speaking, or mute, press the mute button on your computer screen if you're joined by Zoom. And also, it's somewhat helpful, if you are not speaking, if you would turn off your video on the Zoom. I think it saves bandwidth. So if you're not speaking, please mute and turn off the video. Then we do need to go over some procedural points. Because we're conducting this remotely, it's important that you be recognized by the chair when speaking. There should be only one person speaking at a time, and you need to be recognized by the chair. Please say your name. I will repeat your name, and then again, repeat your name before you begin speaking, just so it's very clear who is speaking. We will do all votes by the board by roll call. I'll ask each board member for your vote. And actually, before we continue, I just want to do a roll call of the board to make sure that everyone is present. I believe we are, but may I ask Tom Gagin?
Here.
And also Warren Chain?
Here.
Bob Wertschfter?
Here.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus here.
Thank you. And Art Spru?
Art Spru here.
All right. And this is Kathryn Halpern, and I am also here. I think that's everyone. All right. And then also, if you are a member of the public and you get up to speak on a certain matter, when recognized by the chair, please give your name and also the last four digits of your phone number. Let's see. So I think that's it, and we will take all votes by roll call. Let me just see if there's any other procedural points. I think that's it. So let's get on to the first point on our agenda, which is the minutes for March 10th and March 24th. Let's do each one separately. Let's first do the March 10th minutes. Do any board members have any comments or amendments? I think rather than calling on each of you, would you just ask to be recognized? And if no one has any comments... So if no one has any comments or amendments to the March 10th minutes, may I ask for a motion to approve the March 10th minutes?
This is Warren Chain. I shall move.
Thank you, Warren. Could you give your name, please?
Tom Gagin, second.
Great. So we have, and so now I'll take the vote by roll call. Tom Gagin?
I approve.
All right. Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, I approve.
Kathryn Halpern, I approve. So let's go on to the March 24th minutes. I'll ask if there's any comments or changes. There being none, may I have a motion to approve? Yes, I'm sorry.
It's Art.
Art, hello, Art. Yes.
I guess there's just one clarification I should...
Sure.
Maybe it's just a thought or suggestion. There's a lot of times where you're entering and exiting. It's not really clear that, you know, this was our remote... Well, it was right at the beginning, but I think, you know, the whole reason why you were entering and exiting is because you were being disconnected. And I don't know if there should be a comment on that, because there might be some questions about, well, why did you keep leaving?
Yes. Okay. I actually, I actually think that's a good suggestion. I think it did come up once, when a vote was taken, I had been disconnected, and I did request that it be noted that I didn't vote because I was disconnected. So would you suggest that we do that as a general?
A general statement, I think, that just to others to be aware of it in case they review the minutes sometime in the future.
Yes. Okay. So let's add that clarification. That, and were there any other board members who were disconnected in that way? I had a lot of trouble with my cell connection that night. So let's just add a general sentence that the chairman was repeatedly disconnected due to cell service interruptions. Any other amendments or additions to the March 24th minutes? There being none, may I have a motion to approve with the addition of the sentence about the disconnections?
Art Spru, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24, 2020 minutes.
Thank you, Art. May I have a second?
This is Warren Chain. I second it.
Thank you. So let's take a vote. Tom Gagin?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Kathryn Halpern, I approve. All right. Next item on our agenda is an approval not required. This is for 175 Barcliff Avenue. Do I have a presenter for this matter? Ali, do you know if anyone is presenting for this?
Yes, I believe Tom Stello is presenting, and he is on the call.
Great. So would you kindly introduce yourself?
Sure. For the record, my name is Tom Stello. I'm from TS Land Surveying, here to represent the applicants, Heather Hughes and Brad Cody. The purpose of this plan is to create a non-buildable parcel at the rear of the subject lot to be conveyed to the applicants. Their property is owned by Andrea and Michael Towley, and they have agreed to sell off a piece of their property to the neighbors so that they may, you know, gain larger backyard. So the lots located in the R20 residential zoning district, where the minimum lot area required is 20,000 square feet, and the minimum frontage required is 100 feet. And as a result of this division, there will be 30,000, greater than 30,000 square feet for the remaining lot, which is well over the 20,000, and the frontage will remain unchanged.
Okay, thank you. I think this, I think this meets our requirements for an approval not required. Any, I'll go through the board, see if there's any comments. Tom Gagin?
No comment.
Okay. Warren Chain?
No comment.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, no comment.
Bob Wertschfter?
No comment.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, no comment.
And Kathryn Halpern, I have no comment. I think this meets our requirements. So I would ask for a motion to endorse the Approval Not Required Plan entitled Division Plan of Land at 175 Barcliff Avenue. May I have a motion to endorse?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Art. And a second?
Bob Dubus, I'll second it.
All right. We'll do the vote by roll call. Tom Gagin, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Art Spru, may I have your vote?
Art Spru, yes.
Warren Chain, may I have your vote?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Yes, yeah.
Bob, Bob Dubus? Bob, Bob Dubus. Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And Catherine Halpern, I approve the endorsement of this plan, this A and R plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is an amended site plan review for 693 Main Street. And again, do I have a presenter on the call for this matter?
Susan Ledoux from HPDC?
Great. Thank you, Susan.
Yep. Welcome. Can I start?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. We had, we were before you a year ago with some modifications to the parking area at 693 Main Street, where Semasko Burridge is now, has their architectural office. And they would like to, if you can look at the landscape plan and the site plan, move the refuse containers and enclosure just to the rear of the parking area next to the AC condenser unit, so that the access for pickup is much easier. And so that's what we're here before you today for is this part of 693 Main Street, is asking for that change in the site plan. And just to let, you know, we'll be before HPDC next Wednesday for the same change.
All right. And you've submitted some photographs to us now. Have you already moved the bins to that location? You've submitted a photo of the fencing, yeah?
Yeah, that's the fencing we'd like to put around the enclosure. And one other photo, let me just take a look at my photos. Yeah, it shows you where the refuse containers will be located, and then the enclosure will be built and the fencing so that they, you know, are disguised and not, not obvious.
Okay.
Cars in the parking area.
Thank you. So I'll just go through the board and see if anyone has comments or questions. Tom Gagin?
None.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, no comment.
Warren Chain?
No questions.
Bob Wertschfter?
No questions.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, no questions.
And I actually have no questions. It seems pretty straightforward. So what our, our action would be is to.
Catherine, sorry, this is Ally. Before you go on, do you just want to ask if there's any public comment?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much for reminding me. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment on this matter? Do I hear something? Or? I don't, I don't see that there's any public comment. So in that case, what our action would be, would be to approve the amended site plan for the relocation of the refuse bins and enclosure. So we have a, we would have a separate action in considering the release of the performance bond. But let's first consider the approval of the amended site plan. May I have a motion to approve the site plan as amended?
Tom Gagin, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Warren Chain, I second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Art Spru? Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And Catherine Halpern, I approve the amended site plan as well. So then, the other consideration, Susan, did you want to speak on the release of the bond as well? Susan Ledoux?
Sure.
All right. Please go ahead.
The board, I think it was at least a couple months ago now, released a part of our $10,000 bond, the $8,000 for the site improvements, and the striping was not completed at that time. And then the trash bins of the refuse area. So now we've completed the striping, and we will be completing the change to the trash bin refuse area with the installation of the fence, as you just approved it. And so we're asking for the release of the remaining $2,000.
All right. I'll go through the board, see if there's any comments or questions first. Tom Gagin?
My comment would be to ask the town planner if this additional work has been performed to the town's satisfaction.
This is Ally.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Oh, sorry, Catherine. Yes, the striping has been completed. And obviously, the refuge bins have been relocated to this area that was just approved by the board. The only thing that I believe, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, that has not been completed is the fencing around the garbage bins area. And so one of my recommendations in the staff report is that if the board does want to release the full $2,000 bond, that it would be subject to confirmation from the community development department that the fencing has been placed on site. And then after that is the case, then we will be able to release the bond directly from community development. But we would hold it until the fencing has been completed, if that's the direction that the board wants to have.
Okay.
Catherine, Tom Gagin?
Yes, please go ahead, Tom.
I would have a follow-up question for Susan Ledoux. And my question would be, is there anything in the pipeline or work scheduled for that fencing to be installed? Has it been contracted and is in someone's pipeline to get that actually physically installed?
Yeah, well, well, Tom, just to back up, we'd like to have it done by the end of the week, but we have to go to HPDC next Wednesday to have it approved. And so I would say, following that meeting, I anticipate that they would approve the fencing, and we put it up as soon as we have their approval.
Tom Gagin, thank you. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
And I'll continue through the board with any comments or questions. Art Spru?
No, no comment.
Warren?
I would support the what we suggested by the planning.
All right, great. Warren Chain?
Only that I would concur with the suggestion that the, the final release would be done by the community development office upon completion of the fencing.
Okay, excellent. Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
All right. And Bob Dubus? This is not a formal vote. I'm just asking for your comments. We'll take the vote in a moment.
This is Bob Dubus. I agree with, with, with the alley and the group, you hear stuff when it gets up, when the fence gets up.
Good. Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern. I also agree. I think that's, that it would be fine to release the bond contingent upon the community development department confirmation that the bins have been relocated and the fence has been up, put up as, as designed. So now let's do our formal vote. I will need a motion to grant the full release of the bond contingent upon the confirmation by the community development department that the fence has been constructed with HPDC's approval, et cetera, et cetera. May I have a motion?
This is Warren Chain. So moved.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Arthur. So we'll do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
Yes.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
I approve also, Bob Dubus.
All right. And Catherine Halpern, I also approve. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, so the next item on our agenda are some recommendations to the zoning board of appeals. They are all regarding driveways in the conservancy district. They're three separate addresses, so we'll have to do each one separately. But they are kind of an interconnected piece of property. And we do have, Ally is showing us on the screen now, the full plan showing all the three addresses and the driveways. So let's start with 46 Little Beach Road. And do I have a presenter for this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Bill Riley, and I believe Thad Eldridge is on the line as well.
Great. Great. So please go ahead, Bill and Thad.
Well, the, I'll start, but it's really Thad's game here. The, the, what the applicant is doing is elevating the homes so they're above the floodplain. And, you know, so new FEMA foundations and reconfiguring the driveways. And there's some lateral expansion of the structures as well. Right now, the driveways are gravel or dirt. And the, there's no plan to install asphalt. Thad, do you want to explain more?
Sure. Additionally, we're upgrading the septic systems to be more compliant than the existing septic systems. We've designed the driveways. They're, you know, the way is the way. So we're staying more or less in the same location. Forty, well, we're in 46. That driveway is shifting away from the BVW, and it's going to drive under garages that are being installed in the proposed house. It does increase the area a little bit, but we are getting it away from that wetland. As Bill mentioned, they're pervious material, and they will not obstruct the flow of water. I agree.
All right, great. So I'll go through the board, just see if there's any questions or comments. Tom Gagin?
None.
Art Spru?
Art Spru. I guess, Thad, I needed clarification. Is the whole net on the three of these, I know I'm asking for the subsequent ones too, but the whole net on the three of these are neutral as far as any impacts? I noticed in some of the numbers, there's pluses and there are minuses. I'm just interested in whether there's any net increase or decrease.
In total, there is a slight increase. The driveways do get a bit wider. The garages are separated. And also, the way itself, we've come in a little bit wider than what exists, so that an emergency vehicle could get down here. As it is a stone driveway, and it's, it's within a somewhat naturalized area, we know that it will naturally fill in, and this area will decrease in time. But we do want the ability for emergency vehicles to get in and out of here and have that, that solid surface to be able to drive over.
Okay, but the, the pervious surface is the only thing that has an adjustment there. The, the homes are a separate issue, of course, and anything. But you're retaining pervious with non-pervious, even if there is an adjustment from the standpoint of square footage, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Catherine.
All right. Let's see. I've done Tom and Art. So Warren Chain, do you have any comments or questions for Thad and Bill Riley?
No comments or questions about the driveways. No.
Bob Wertschfter?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand, because the applications speak of changing the actual coverage of the house, but that isn't part of our decision today? And could somebody explain to me how we approve the driveways, but not the change in the homes? I mean, given.
Yeah.
Catherine?
Station area?
Catherine, this is Ally.
Yep, go ahead, Ally.
So there's a requirement in our bylaw that when the zoning board of appeals reviews a change to a driveway for a house or anything like that, that's in the conservancy district, the planning board does have to review it and make a comment to the zoning board of appeals. So under this bylaw, we don't review the change in location of the homes or anything like that. It's just the construction and maintenance of a driveway or roadway of minimum legal and practical width, where no alternative means of access from established way is available. So those are, that's a direct quote from the bylaw, which is, gives us, you know, the regulation that says that we need to look at this and give a recommendation to the zoning
And again, and Bob Wertschfter, this is Catherine. It's a private home, and in general, the planning board considers, does not consider residential properties. But obviously, this is, we do look at the driveways in these cases. All right. So Bob Dubus, any comments or questions?
Bob Dubus, no comments, no questions.
Okay. And this is Catherine. I have no comments. I, these were submitted separately. I did request that we saw them all together. It was very helpful to, to see that all together. And thank you, Thad, for all the details. So right now, we do need to do them one by one. And we're looking at 46 Little Beach Road. I would suggest that we would send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And if the board agrees, could I have a motion to that effect?
Bob Dubus, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Tom Gagin, second.
And we'll do.
Catherine, this is Art Spru?
Yes.
I think Ally has put a statement in here as for consideration. Are we including that as part of what we're recommending to the zoning board of appeals?
That we say the, the plans for such construction shall be submitted, that such driveway or roadway shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. Do you mean that sentence?
That one. And plus, there's another one.
Oh, down at the bottom. The driveway shall be constructed of a permeable, permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. Thad has confirmed this for us. But yes, we usually include that sentence. And yes, we should include that in the motion. So maybe should we redo the motion? Including that sentence?
Bob Dubus, I redo the motion to include that sentence.
Thank you very much. And may I have a second?
Tom Gagin, second to Bob.
All right. Let's do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
I approve the motion as read.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And Catherine Halpern, I approve the favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for regarding the driveway at 46 Little Beach Road. So now let's look at 47 Little Beach Road.
Madam Chair, Bill Riley.
Yes. Go ahead.
Can I suggest, in the interest of your time, that we consider 47 and 53 together? You can always take independent votes.
That's fine with me. Ally, do you have any comment on that?
No, I think that that's good.
All right. So let's consider 47 and 53 together, but we will take separate votes. Thank you, Mr. Riley. So first.
Thank you. I'd ask Thad to address the reconfiguration of the driveways on those two properties.
All right. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. 47 does not have a driveway at the moment. They share a parking area with 53. The proposal here is to have a driveway that has two parking spaces and, and is further away from that wetland. It's down to the, to the west. 53, the driveway is being reconfigured. We needed room for the septic system, so we couldn't put it in the same spot where it was. And so we have placed it further west. And all of this was in an attempt to consolidate all of our, our development out here. Otherwise, pervious. Otherwise, pervious materials, unobstructed flow of water. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. So I'll go through the board, see if there's any questions or comments. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, no questions, no comments.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, no questions, no comments.
Thank you. Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain, I have no questions or comments on 46 or 53 Little Beach.
Thank you. Bob Wertschfter?
I have no comments.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus has no questions or comments on either one of the two properties, 53 and 47.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I have no questions or comments. It seems that, so let's take the vote separately. Let's first do 47 Little Beach Road. And again, I would suggest that we would send a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we can include the sentence, which Thad has affirmed, that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. May I have a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the driveway at 47 Little Beach Road?
Tom Gagin, so approved.
Second motion.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
Yes.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And Catherine Halpern, I approve. So that's for 47 Little Beach Road. So for 53 Little Beach Road, again, I would suggest we should send a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the proposed driveway plans. We can include the sentence, which Thad has affirmed, that the driveway will be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. And may I have a motion to approve?
Bob Dubus will make the motion again, please, for 53 Little Beach.
Thank you, and may I have a second?
Art Spru, I'll second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
I approve.
Art Spru?
Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
And Catherine Halpern, I approve. So thank you, Bill Riley and Thad.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the members.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So. What's that? Does someone have music on? Thank you. Somehow.
I was just dancing.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So let's go on to our next points of discussion. We have a couple of matters. We were in touch with all of the board members recently about changing our meeting schedule. Currently, we meet for our regular Planning Board meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. And because there's been changes in the schedules of other boards, notably the Board of Selectmen, we would like to change our regular meeting schedule to the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Regularly schedule them at 5:00 PM. So I will ask if there is any discussion on this. I'll go through the board, if that's all right. Tom Gagin, do you have any discussion on this matter?
Tom Gagin has no issues with the change.
All right, Art Spru?
Art Spru, I'm okay with Monday. It's going to be 5:00 for the remainder of the year, is that right?
That's what we're proposing.
No, that's fine with me, too.
All right. And Warren Chain?
The only comment I have is that I haven't checked the calendar, but Mondays are sometimes holidays, as opposed to Tuesdays, which almost never are. So I don't know if that creates an issue if you happen to have a holiday on one of those scheduled meeting dates.
Right. Ally, did you want to comment on that?
Yep, so this is Ally, and yes, that would create a problem if there was a holiday on a scheduled meeting date. But Michelle Clark from our office is working on a new schedule, and she's working around those holidays. So it might not always be on the first and third meeting. It might be on the second and third, or we might skip a date. It really depends, but we're working on a schedule for you to review going forward.
But that's the only comment I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Warren.
Catherine, this is Art.
Yes, Art, go ahead.
Ally just said something that I was, just want to verify. Currently, our meetings are in the second and the fourth.
Correct.
She said the first and the third. Are we changing these to Monday on the first and third?
Sorry, this is Ally, no. Thank you, Art, for correcting me, the second and fourth.
Okay. All right, just wanted a clarification, thank you.
Thanks, Art. Yeah, we'll change to the second and fourth Mondays at 5:00. But as Ally noted, sometimes that might switch to the first or the third Monday if there's a holiday on the second or fourth Monday. Does that make sense, Art?
Yes, it does, thank you very much. And as long as somebody has, you know, a calendar of all the ones, and I can put it in mine, I'm fine with all of this.
Okay, great.
Catherine, Tom Gagin?
Yes.
Catherine, I have a question for Ally and for you.
Sure.
The, the new schedule, is this going to start at what time, please? I mean, not what time, but what date, please?
We would start in June. We'd start, isn't that correct, Ally? We'd start our June meetings on this new schedule.
Yes, this is Ally.
Tom Gagin, thank you.
In June, and the first date is tentatively June 8th.
Okay. So Bob Wertschfter, any comments or questions?
No, no comments, and it's okay.
Okay, and Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I have nothing to say about it, it's fine with me.
All right, and I'm fine with it. So I think it would be good to take a formal vote to change our schedule for regular Planning Board meetings to change. As of June 1st, we would change from the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at 5:00 PM to the second and fourth Mondays of the month at 5:00 PM. May I have a motion to that effect?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Well, second then.
Thank you, so, great. And we'll do a roll call vote. Tom Gagin?
Vote to approve the change in the date from Tuesdays, second and fourth, to Mondays, second and fourth, Monday of each of the months.
All right, and Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus will approve as long as the meeting starts at 5:00 and not 4:00.
All right, that's what we're proposing, Bob. And this is Catherine Halpern, and I approve as well this change. The next discussion item, and I may let Ally brief you on this matter, is that we want to consider authorizing the Planning Board Chair to endorse approval-not-required plans and subdivision plans on behalf of the Planning Board pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Section 81L. And again, we would want to do a formal vote, but I think I'll ask Ally, if you don't mind, presenting the considerations behind this proposal.
Sure, no problem. So this is Ally, and I had submitted a memo to the Planning Board to potentially consider, just based upon the COVID-19 emergency and the fact that the last time we had to sign an A&R plan, each one of the board members had to come in separately to endorse the plan. It is allowable under Mass General law that the board can elect a person to endorse the plans on behalf of the Planning Board. It was just my recommendation that it would be the board chair. There are other towns and cities in Massachusetts that do allow this. I just thought, to bring it up to the board for their, for your consideration, just, you know, for the safety of the board members at the moment. But it really is up to the board and what you would like to do going forward. If you do want to allow this, it would be for both the A&R endorsements and also subdivision endorsements. The board would still review each application as they have come in. You'd still, you know, approve or disapprove them. It would just be whoever's signing the plan instead of the entire board. It would be just one of the board members, presumably the chair. If you do agree to this, we do have to sign, basically notifying the Registry of Deeds that the board has agreed to allow this. And in your staff report, at the bottom of the first page, and I believe it goes on to the second a little bit, there is just some wording if you did want to consider this. So I think that's it, Catherine. And, oh, I just wanted to make one more comment that we already do this for site plan applications. The board reviews site plans, they either, they approve them, approve them with conditions, but the chair does endorse the plan on behalf of the board for our site plan. So we're already doing it in one aspect, just not the other. But it's really up to the board for your consideration on which direction you'd like to go.
So why don't we go through, yes, we'll go through, and if I can call on each board member and get comments and discussion. So Tom Gagin, we'll start with you.
Catherine, I have two questions, please. The first question would be directed to you as to your level of comfort on taking on this responsibility. Do you feel comfortable doing this? And my second question would be, would there be a terminal date to be determined where this process would be reversed in the future? I know that that date can't be picked now, but this process could be reversed if the board so decided in the future to do so. So again, my first question, is this duty something you feel comfortable with and not being forced upon you?
All right, thank you, Tom. So I'll reply to Tom's question. Yes, I'm comfortable with it. When Ally and I discussed this, as Ally noted, the chair already signs site plan approvals on behalf of the board. For some reason, more signatures are required for approval-not-required and subdivision plan approvals. But for site plan approvals, just the board signature is already done, and that's our standard procedure. And as Ally noted, other towns, it is the standard procedure for other towns on A&Rs and subdivision plans as well. So yes, I'm comfortable with it. And also, I would just comment that we could put this in place as a temporary or a permanent change, either way. In the case of approval-not-required, it's a little, I have to admit, it seemed a little odd to me because in some sense, those only require the town clerk. But as a formality, they do go through the Planning Board, we do endorse them, and then signatures are required. So it seems to make sense if the board so chooses. I'm happy to do it. And we could do it either way. You could set a date that, or you could, we could set a date that it's, these procedures are reviewed again once we are no longer meeting remotely. We could say something like that. You'd have to think of proper wording if the board so chooses. So, yes. Go ahead, Tom, and then we'll go through the board for comments.
I'm sorry, Catherine, Tom Gagin. My point was just to make sure that you feel comfortable, you as an individual feel comfortable doing this. It's an additional duty. I have no issue with the process or procedure. And I think it would be premature, at least my view would be, that it would be premature for any one of us to try to forecast when the situation we're currently in is going to turn around and be safe for the board to meet in public and do what we had normally done as a board. So I have, for my second question, I really don't have any end date for this, but just a comment that if the board decided in the future to reverse this, that that would be something the board could then take up at that time.
Okay, so we'll go through the board. Art Spru, do you have questions or comments or discussion on this, on this proposal?
Okay, just, just one clarification. On the wording that Ally had put in her memo, she's referring as the second line authorized by the subdivision control law. So that, to me, implies it's the A&R and the subdivisions that this applies to. Is that, is that what your understanding is, Catherine and Ally?
Catherine? Yeah, I would, this change, the change that we're considering, yes, applies to the subdivision and the A&R. For site plan reviews, it already is the case that, you know, as a standard procedure, that the chair endorses, signs those on behalf of the board.
I just wanted to confirm that the way it's, the statement is, in Ally's memo, covers both items. You know, you have to go through the subdivision patrol law to see what it says, but I believe it covers the A&R as well as subdivision. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in okay with this, Catherine, thank you.
Okay. All right, so Ally, did you have a comment on?
No, I just wanted to confirm that Art is correct with his statement that it is both A&R and subdivision. And in my staff report, I have it up on the screen here. I believe that this is the wording from Mass General law.
All right, thank you. So Warren Chain, did you have discussion, comments, questions?
No, I have no comments or questions, other than to say it seems like an extremely intelligent thing to do.
Thank you. And Bob Dubus, any questions, comments?
Bob Dubus, no, I think it's a good thing to do, too. It'll save a little time.
All right, and Bob Wertschfter?
Yeah, I'm all for it, and I see absolutely no reason to ever undo it. So I would just like to have the vote be that we make this change without any reference to any further dates where we might consider undoing it.
Okay. So I think that's everyone except me, I'm fine with it. I'm happy to do it. And if the board so chooses, happy to do that on an ongoing basis. So.
Catherine, this is Art. There's one thing I wanted to clarify with it.
Sure.
The statement that is in bold in Ally's memo refers to by its chairman or clerk or any other person authorized. And then, but the motion down below only refers to the chair. So what is it that, what is it that we were considering here? Because the reason why I'm bringing this up is, let's say the chair is absent from a vote, whether it's because they have to recuse themselves or they're, they're absent from the meeting. How does that, how should this be worded to make sure that we cover our bases?
What I would understand is that then, the standard procedures, then the vice chair steps in for the chair. If, in any situation where the chair is absent or recused or, or whatever. And certainly, when I was vice chair, I performed that function for Peter Kokolos. And Ally, do you have a comment on this question?
No, I think it's, it's good forward thinking by Art on this. Because the motion, this statement will be sent to the Registry of Deeds, so they'll have it on file. So you're right, we might want to put in something that says the Planning Board Chair, or in their absence, the Planning Board Clerk or the Vice Chair, whoever the board wants to deem. But maybe it would be a good idea to have a second person because Mass General law does allow, it says chairman or clerk or any person authorized by it to certify or endorse its approval. So I think that's a good idea to potentially put an alternate as well. Um, so I think that's a good idea to uh potentially put an alternate as well.
All right, so we could say by its chairman or in their absence, vice chair. Maybe we should hear.
That works for me, Catherine.
All right, great. I, that's the standard procedure we've been following generally, you know, ever since I've been on the board. Uh, in the absence of the chair, the vice chair will perform those duties. Ally, do you think that's sufficient?
Yes, I do. I think that that's, that's good.
So would we just change your, the section in bold that would say or by its chairman or in the chairman's absence, the vice chairman?
Yep, so it would be the statement on the um bottom of the page, so that the planning board chair or um in its absence, the vice chair.
Okay. I'm just reading under this, this is Massachusetts, this is sort of required some security. All right. Great. If there's no other discussion on this, we should take a formal vote and and we'll use the wording, you're, so you want to use the wording at the bottom of the page. And actually, I'm having a little trouble seeing where you insert. Oh, I see, it starts, the planning board chair or in their absence, the planning board vice chair is hereby authorized. So just like that.
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. So that will be our, so I'll read it. The planning board chair or in their absence, the planning board vice chair is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Chatham Planning Board under the subdivision control law of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one K through Section eighty-one GG to certify or endorse its approval or other action if any plan or other instrument required or authorized by the subdivision control law to be recorded and or to execute any agreements or other documents to secure the performance of any person or applicant under the subdivision control law. So may I have a motion that we adopt this as our permanent, it's been suggested we adopt this as our permanent procedure. So unless there's any discussion, may I have a motion to that effect?
This is Warren Chain. I still move.
May I have a second?
Arts Brew, I'll second the motion.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Tom Gagan.
Uh, I, I approve.
Uh, Arts Brew?
Brew approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wirtzhafter?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
I, Bob Dubus, I approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I approve. Okay. So now we've added also another discussion uh on the agenda that uh we want to consider. Oh, let me just take a look here at my amended agenda. We're considering temporary changes to site plan uh approvals regarding the COVID nineteen emergency. And uh we just want to open up this discussion. Ally sent us a link uh to take a look at what some other towns are doing. I think what the idea is, if I can summarize it, and if any of you also listened to the public forum last night on the COVID nineteen emergency for the town of Chatham, some of these ideas did come up that, for example, there may be restaurants in town that due to the requirements of maintaining social distancing or providing takeout service, takeout meals with curbside service. Oh. Am I disconnected?
No, you're still here.
Okay. The computer's giving me a signal. It looks like I'm disconnected, but if I'm not, I'll go ahead. So that they may wish to, in a sense, expand, this is just an example, expand their seating and have outdoor seating and request their, therefore, under normal circumstances, they would need to come to the planning board to get an approval for an amended site plan and for a change of, in the number of seats, which would be change of use and we'd have to reconfigure their parking requirements and so on. But the thought was, in during this time, maybe putting a time limit on it. And I'm suggesting Columbus Day as one time limit, then it could be reevaluated, that we offer a a less onerous way of approaching potential needs of businesses to change their site plan configuration to accommodate the requirements uh of of the COVID nineteen emergency. So Ally, did you want to add anything to that summary before we start taking discussion?
Um, no, I think you summarized it very well. Um, we're just trying to kind of figure out a way to help businesses through this emergency in a temporary capacity at the moment. Uh, just trying to make the process a little bit easier for them, knowing that it could be temporary. Um, and as Catherine said, we're thinking maybe temporary would be Columbus Day. But we also had some internal staff discussion that said basically that we could have this uh temporary kind of rule that the planning board has valid for forty-five days after the governor lifts its restriction. Um, so, and the board obviously can discuss this further, but I just kind of had a few thoughts on it and internal staff discussions, we had a few thoughts on it, that maybe instead of having, you know, the whole site plan approval where they would come in with, you know, surveyed plans and you know, drainage calculations and all that kind of stuff, it would just be a lot more simpler, understanding that's a temporary action. Um, and it would be maybe a letter stating that, oh, that they were going to add, you know, some seat, as an example, some seats outside um because of the emergency, they want, you know, people to be outside instead of in. There, you know, we'll have to see what happens with the governor's orders if they're going to limit capacity on the amount of restaurant, of the amount of seating. So parking wouldn't be necessarily affected, but they would be adding, you know, maybe additional seats. So we just want to make sure that, I think that we're thoughtful about how we treat businesses during this time and to try to just be as helpful as we can, um, understanding that it is, you know, a temporary situation at the moment. And if it did turn in uh to be a permanent situation of adding seats, they would have to come back for an amended site plan. But at this time, um because of the emergency, I think, you know, the board could consider maybe some flexibility.
Good, thank you, Ally. This is Catherine. I just wanted to comment that one idea, I think, as Ally mentioned, is rather than the formal site plan review, it would be maybe a letter describing the changes they wish to make in a sketch that would show us how they would be arranging their, for as an example, a restaurant wanting to expand its seating, how they'd arrange their seating so that the six-foot social distancing would, distancing would be maintained. But usually it'll be the case that they're not actually adding seats or adding capacity. In fact, they'll probably be operating with less capacity, but just greater space in between the seats. So something like a a sketch and just a letter describing what they propose was something that came up. But now, uh if I, I'll just go through the board again, if I may, and ask the discussion, ideas, comments, uh questions. Tom Gagan.
Uh, thank you, Catherine. Uh, my, my question would be, and I think you've just touched on it, is that what we're trying to do as a board and town is to make sense of the constraints that the restaurants have in terms of maintaining somewhat profitability or certainly standing in time. What you said, and my understanding would be that uh under no circumstances would an individual business restaurant uh wind up with additional capacity based on um social distancing and the other recommendations by the governor, that in fact, uh they may be moving some of their seating, which normally is interior, to the exterior or outside of the building. But in in no instance would they go from, say, a hundred seats to a hundred and fifty seats. So with that understanding, in terms of giving the individual restaurant businesses a greater flexibility to be profitable and to serve the town, that we would allow, the board would allow uh with a letter uh from them the ability to to move some of their patrons to the uh outside of the building, showing us how they were going to do that. But the number of seats and capacity for the individual restaurant would not be increased.
Good. Great. Arts Brew, do you have comments, discussion, ideas?
Um, I, I like uh Tom's uh approach to it uh from the standpoint of the seating and how you retain the same number. I think the other part that I was thinking of had to do with a a time limit associated with this. If there is, if we are going to um sign off on this, I think we should put this down at a specific time limit so that it expires. And uh if we want to put in there as a clarification that if they want to make this permit, they're going to have to submit a formal site plan review and go through the whole site plan review process. Something like that, but I would say the more important thing is to actually put expiration time limit on this because it shouldn't be assumed to be open or it would be uh they might just continue to do this even after a a specific time that, say, uh is no longer requires to have the social distancing issue.
Thank you.
I'm open to so, uh other ideas associated with this, but I I don't think we should leave it open.
Catherine?
Uh, yes, Tom. Yes, Tom.
I think what Arthur's saying makes good sense, and I think you've alluded to that also. I know in um in past uh work history that the board could probably set something called a sunset clause or a sun, sunset issue. Uh, and with agreement from the board, certainly from the uh town staff, there could be uh an extension of this uh through a letter process for a period of time. And we could call it the sunset uh for this particular provision.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Warren Chain, do you have comments, discussion, ideas?
Um, one, well, a couple of comments. The materials that Ally sent around focus on several different areas, sometimes uh in particular, talking about special use permits that can uh be put into a gray area or um uh restaurants might find themselves, you know, out of compliance. I don't know to what extent this board um is involved in all special permits, special use permits for a restaurant. For example, if they start serving wine outside, they're serving alcohol off the premises, for example. I don't know how that gets handled, but it seems to me it ought to be within the scope of the spirit of this discussion that um that special use permit conditions um would be somehow suspended or not enforced during this period to the extent that they are consistent with uh allowing restaurants to have outdoor dining, for example. And uh there's also in Ally's materials a suggestion that many municipalities are reducing or waiving the fees that might be necessary for changing use permits or any of the other uh provisions that would require them to come and file uh with this board. I don't know if we are interested in trying to consider such a a move to try and quote, help restaurants, who if we know fall to the wrong, need to uh make new applications. And with the fee structures that would be involved. But if if we did wish to do that, then my question would be, are we authorized to uh mess with the fee structure? I'm not sure that we are. The um, and those would be my comments, really. I am in favor of trying to provide the flexibility and perhaps um it would include just a a resolution to suspend enforcement of certain provisions uh during this specified period.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, this is Catherine. Ally, I'm just going to ask you if you have a comment about waiving fees and then also about the special uses that Warren brought up.
Um, yes, of course. So I believe that in order to waive fees, the town manager has to approve it and possibly the board selectman, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know Katie's on the call as well, so if she uh has clarification, that'd be great. But the, I, this isn't just going to be a planning board discussion. I think it needs to kind of be through that, the whole town, um Board of Health, Historic Business District Commission, and also the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we're all going to have to work together because, you know, for each individual application, they have to go to usually multiple boards to get approvals. So we'll all have to work together, but we just really wanted to start to have this conversation to see what the planning board's appetite is for um, you know, potentially allowing temporary approval of expansion of businesses without going through the entire site plan approval process.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Let's see, how about Bob Wirtzhafter? Do you have common answer questions?
Yeah.
I mean, or discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I have two issues, I guess. One is in terms of uh sunset, I do not believe it should be a, uh, we should be talking about a time, but we should be talking about a sunset conditions so that um we can, if we're going to put anything in there, it would be, uh, this would be in effect until the the board of selectmen determine that the uh crisis was over, at which point they would have the fifteen days or whatever to undo what they were doing. I don't, something on that order, but not, this expires in forty-five days because we have no idea whether forty-five days is long enough. I certainly don't want to be doing this twice. Um, so, so that would be my first um comment. My second is that this, this really applies to a lot more of our businesses than just restaurants. I think we talked last night about stores having um pull-up and drop-off areas and and uh tables outside of their, their properties. It it speaks to manufacturing of different products inside of the buildings in terms of the meeting emergencies or or doing other things than they were originally intended to do. So I do not think that this is limited to just restaurants and 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 you know, the number of of tables and and things like that. So it 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 has to have a little bit broader uh scope to it. And I'm not sure we're at, we're ready to do that now or not.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And how about Bob Dubus? Do you have some ideas, comments?
I think this is a pretty good idea. It might be uh under the circumstances that this could keep a lot of business owners in business and and also maybe, maybe have some of our visitors enjoy the town instead of being cramped up or or not being able to go out or not be able to go shopping or not be able to do this or that, that uh I think it's, I think it's a viable idea and and I'm I'm for it. And and I think that at, there will be a point where we should get together and say, okay, now, now might be the time to to say, okay, enough is enough. We can go back to the way it was, although it's, eh, this has changed the whole world, so we'll just have to play it by ear.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob. This is Catherine. Uh, I just want to, I would agree with that. I think we should consider some sort of time limit, but I think this idea of having a condition limit might be better because like it or not, the possibility is, is that these conditions may extend into the future, that we may be looking at new ways of doing business and new ways of living life and that we, you know, that it's not something that all of a sudden will be over and we will go back to normal. It might be something that, you know, I I like the idea of a condition, uh, conditions that would determine that these special, special allowances be terminated. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of the idea. I'm certainly in favor of the idea. I think whatever we can do that, you know, as many of you have suggested, to help our businesses survive and thrive under these new conditions. And it is correct, it's not just restaurants, it would be retail. But I think in general, if I could suggest, the principle we want to look at is the things that we review as the planning board, which are site plan amendments, that what are the ways that we could allow for that in either retail, for example, or restaurant, allow for those types of changes that might be needed to adapt to conditions of the COVID-19 emergency? What can we do to make those procedures quick and lighter and easier? One suggestion that Ally brought up when she and I discussed it was rather than the formal site plan review with the surveyed plans and so on, that a letter and a sketch, a letter describing what they wish to do and why, and a sketch of the property showing where the expansion will be. In the case of retail, if they're going to have some outside area, that's for curbside pickup, for example, of orders. They could just sketch that out on their property and show us what they intend to do, show us how they will be maintaining, whatever protocols are in place from Governor Baker, such as the six-foot social distancing and so on. And Ally's mentioned that waiving fees would need to be, we'd need to check through town manager. Since this is an informal procedure that we'd be adopting, would it still incur the fee that a site plan approval would incur? Or would it just be a separate procedure that actually doesn't have a fee associated with it at this time? So those are my comments. I want to go back to Ally and just ask you, it seems to me the board is generally in favor of taking these measures. I think what we need to do is specify what exactly we want to do and what we want to say and what action we'd need to take to put that in place. So I'm going to ask you, Ally, for your comments on that.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think that, you know, now that I have a better feel of which direction the board wants to go, I think that I could maybe put something kind of in writing as a policy that the board could do going forward. I know that Katie is also on the phone call, so I don't know if she has any further comments about it. Catherine, if it's okay with you.
Oh, absolutely. Please, go ahead, Katie.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I hope you're all doing well. The, so Ally is correct, the town manager does have approval, authority to waive some fees and the board of selectmen has authority to waive others. But Catherine, you are correct, where this wouldn't necessarily be a formal process, there may not be a fee associated with it overall. I guess, and I also agree with Ally, that, you know, putting something together for, you know, for a policy, given hopefully some more information coming from the governor over the next few days regarding reopening, we'll have a better understanding of what, you know, potentially what some of the requirements would be. One thing I would ask the board is if there is any instance in the interest of time for these business owners, if they would allow for an administrative approval, perhaps by staff, and then with a letter follow-up to the board. Just thinking about timing, your next meeting now is May 26th, which is after Memorial Day, but your next, but because of the public hearings that you're having, the next potential date that you would actually hear from any business might be June 8th. So just thinking in the interest of time, if there was anything, I'm just not saying you have to, but I'm just opening up for discussion, potentially the option of an administrative approval by staff. If a business were to be reducing their occupancy limits and still meeting all of the parking requirements, would it be necessary? So just something for the board to think about. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, in regards to retail, there are certain provisions regarding outdoor sales, sale of goods, where I actually have the authority in certain areas to allow for the outdoor sale of goods. And then in other areas, it's the board of selectmen. So those are things that we'll be reviewing as well to think about the retail stores. So again, we haven't thought of every way that this could potentially affect a business, but it's, you know, each day we're, you know, hearing from different folks about, you know, what their challenges are. So we're just trying to be as flexible as possible and trying to be as friendly to the businesses as possible, given this situation. So we're certainly open to discussion, I just wanted to throw some other options out there.
Great. Thank you, Katie. This is Catherine, I just wanted to make a few comments. Thank you, Katie. I think that's great information. Certain, I personally would be in favor that perhaps once we work together with you and Ally and we craft what this new lighter procedure will be and it's spelled out and we set that in motion, that it would be fine with me at least to have that, the individual cases come up and just go through Community Development Department. And then maybe, you know, the board can review what's been done just for information. But it certainly would help expedite things. So maybe once we craft together what the stipulations of this new procedure, lighter procedure would be, I'd be in favor of having Community Development Department carry them through for the sake of, you know, getting them through more quickly, that makes sense. So I think, Tom Gagin, you had a comment too?
Yes, I did. Catherine, I'd like to address a comment to both Katie and to Ally. Trying to be somewhat philosophical in the predicament that the world is in. What I say is, or what I'm thinking is that it's not a time for bureaucracy, which we are part of as a regulatory board, for bureaucracy to act in bureaucratic ways. I think Catherine, Katie mentioned it, that the staff is probably trying to work to be very supportive of the businesses in town. And I'd like not for this board or other boards or regulatory institutions bureaucratically to just start putting conditions upon conditions. We should certainly do this with common sense, but let's not be overly bureaucratic about this, please.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
So I guess that could go both ways, Tom. It could be that we, as a planning board, decide that what is being done by the staff is in fact too restrictive and that we would like to have a say in that. So I don't think it's necessarily that we're only, the only thing we could do is make it more difficult for businesses. And in that light, I think in answer to Katie's first statement that we don't really meet until the 8th, I think that given the circumstances and the complexity of the decisions that the town has got to make in the next four weeks, that we should either be prepared to extend the meeting in two weeks or have an emergency meeting to deal with all of this because there's a lot of planning decisions that are part of the, you know, that we're generally discussing last night, involve a lot of planning. And we should be prepared to work with the town and the staff and the selectmen to make sure that that plan is as good as it can be. So I don't think we should be waiting to the 8th to approve stuff if it's moving faster than this.
Okay, great. Great. Other comments, responses?
Catherine, this is Art.
Hi, go ahead, Art.
I think the suggestion was good by Bob. I'm thinking that there should be some input by the board with community development, only because, well, there's no precedent for this. So what kind of guidance does the community development staff have associated with this? We haven't even seen a single one of these come before us, so we don't have an opinion yet on what it should be. And I do agree with Bob, I think we might actually want to be more lenient than the staff. So I think there needs to be a sort of a phase-in period in here, either as Bob was suggesting, that we meet more often just to deal with this issue or that perhaps we assign somebody like the chair or vice chair to consult with the community development to provide input associated with that. I'm just throwing some ideas out there because this is, it's sort of hard to say that one way or the other is a better one until you actually go through a process and you would understand it. So I'm throwing this into the mix because I think if we're going to put a policy out there, then we should understand that, well, if you put a policy out there and all of a sudden the board wants to review it and you don't want the staff to actually have input on it, I would not want to reverse something or do the opposite of that. So I would view that whatever policy you put out there is going to be flexible enough to allow us to do one or the other.
Okay, very good. Other comments or discussion? I would certainly be in favor of, of understanding that we do need to rise to the occasion and maybe we do need to have additional meetings or special meetings to address the issues that come up with regards to our area of regulatory purview that are in response to the COVID-19 crisis. So I definitely, I would think that's our responsibility as a regulatory board, that we're on deck for this. And if we, so if we need to add meetings or extend to deal with this issue, I think that's, that would be wise.
Catherine, Tom Gagin?
Yes, Tom.
Catherine, with your approval, if Art, and I would certainly volunteer if the staff wanted to have input through us for the board and Art and I were available to meet with them on whatever regular basis to kind of move this along with great efficiency, if that's something that you thought made sense, I certainly would volunteer. I'm not volunteering Art, but if we put more time into it, I'm certainly willing to step up and work with the staff to get this thing done in a manner that I think is most appropriate for the town and certainly in favor of the businesses having a reasonable shot at remaining as part of the services that we all appreciate in town.
Okay, that's good. So let's, other comments, other volunteers?
This is Warren.
Yes, Warren.
I forget who had commented that it's really not just a planning board issue. There are issues and questions being thought about by the town manager, by the board of selectmen and potentially, potentially other parts of the town government. And based on the decisions that they make, it seems to me planning board needs to somehow be part of a mosaic of responses that are the consequences of those key policy-setting decisions made by senior parts of the town government. And until we have some guidance or until those collaborations have taken place, it's a little difficult to have Ally decide exactly what consequences there are for businesses, retail, restaurants, the two that have been talked about. But that would require flexibility, short cutting, action by the planning, the community development office. But once there is some collaboration with, among and between all of the elements of town government, then it does seem to me that the community development office could put together exactly what needs to be the response, given those other decisions, that would provide the flexibility that I think we're all in favor of, provide the speed of response that I think we're as well. And then that is in front of us, then you could have the intelligent decision about, well, do we wish to have that authority vested in the community development office or not? Or do we wish to have the ability to, or the obligation to have multiple more meetings, which we would be able to take specific actions on specific situations? But my point really is that it's difficult to come up with anything for the planning board to decide to do until we have a mosaic of decisions from other parts of town government that affect what the planning board involvement will be.
Right, I think, yes, that's a good point. And while, this is Catherine, and while you were talking, Warren, I was just thinking that consistent, for those of you who participated in the community forum last night, consistent with what some of the discussion was there, there's the issue of allowing a new procedure, so to speak, for, and what I'm thinking, that one way to approach this is to take what the planning board is specifically responsible for from the regulatory point of view, which is site plan approvals specifically. So if we look at that specifically, we would see if somebody needed to change their site plan and would normally have to go under a formal site plan amendment approval to expand their seating, for example, or to expand operations in some way, that we're going to make that less onerous by making some allowances for the COVID-19 emergency. But as was brought up last night, consistent with that is also that this is specifically to address the issue of COVID-19. So along with that, we have to see that certain things are enforced, are put in place and enforced. That in other words, as an example, if we use this new process to allow a restaurant to expand their seating outside, for example, which they're doing to allow for social distancing measures with their clients and patrons, that we would need to see that that's actually, that they have a plan to put that in place, to put that six-foot distance in place and that that is what is being done at the restaurant. So there's a, there's kind of another aspect to it that, that along with the leniency, there's also additional requirements, I guess is what I'm saying. So if, are there other discussion points from the board? If not, I wanted to make a couple of points. Does anyone else? Because what I'm wanting to do now is to define a course of action to take. I think we've brought up some ideas. I think in general, the board is in favor of creating a new procedure to address the issue of COVID-19. I'm suggesting that, I think what Warren brings up is absolutely correct. We're part of a whole effort. And a lot of what we do or don't do in this new procedure is dependent upon what Governor Baker decides, what the board of selectmen decide, what all the protocols are, which protocols are put into place by all the other governing bodies that we work with and under. So, but I think one way to approach it is to specifically look at what the planning board is responsible for regulating. And that site plan approvals subdivision, I'm not sure that that's going to come into play so much, but let's just look at the site plan approval. play so much, but let's just look at the site plan approvals and look at that procedure and how we can adapt it to what we foresee the needs of businesses may be, given the requirements of the COVID-19 emergency. And then I would suggest that what we want to do is create, we, we need to design a procedure and, and then put that before the planning board and then vote on that and put it in place. And with that design will also come the decision whether the board should review each of these new procedures, the applicants who come through with this new procedure, whether it should go through the community development department, whether the board just wants to meet, you know, to be more available to review these. So we could also vote on that. So Ally, at this point, maybe I want to talk to you a little bit. Would it be helpful to you in working on crafting, you know, what our procedure would be? Would it be helpful to have myself, maybe Tom, or other volunteers from the board have some discussions with you about it? Or would you like to, based on our discussion this evening, do you think you have enough input from the board to put a draft together that then we could respond to?
I, I think that I have enough input, but if the, if one or two board members want to work with me on it, I'd be more than, you know, happy. We could set up a team meeting and we could discuss it. I, my only thing is that I could, you know, start to draft the policy, but I, as you had all stated, I'm not sure, you know, which way the board really wants to go, if it should be on a staff level to review it, or a staff level with one or two board members, or if it should go to the board. So that's the only kind of question I have with regard to drafting the policy. I could draft it in all three ways if you wanted, and then the board could consider that, but I guess that's really the guidance that I'm looking for. Otherwise, I understand the direction the board wants to go.
Yeah, this is what I'd suggest. I actually, this is Catherine. I would suggest that we draft a procedure, and then there's a procedure, how to implement that procedure, whether it's by complete board review or, or community development department review. I do not think the board is suggesting that we, as the procedure, that we have a partial board review. I think that was more a suggestion to help you work on the draft of what the procedure will be. That was my sense of it. So what I would suggest is that we draft the procedure and then ask the board to take a formal vote on the procedure itself and then on the procedure for implementing the procedure, which would be either community development department or board review. And the board, you know, potentially making itself more available to, to review, to expedite matters for applicants. So I would see that a vote would be called for.
Catherine?
Yes, Tom.
Tom Gigg. I'm having a lot of difficulty with this board putting a procedure together for a very unique situation that we, nor the town, nor the state have really dealt with before. What I could see us doing with Ally, a couple of members with Ally, is outlining a process, a brief process by which an applicant, let's say a restaurant, wants to do something different than their site plan allows them, and put the onus on them to come to the board saying, this is what we'd like to do, here's our plan. And then we would have something for the board to respond to. I just think there's too many unique situations which are not going to be applicable to a general procedure plan outline that's going to cover all of the incidences incidences in the uniqueness or viability of trying to keep these businesses in place. I'd like to have an individual business say, this is what we'd like to do, and can the, can the board give us some input, not as a formal site plan review, but in a letter. And part of that letter is that whatever they're suggesting that they do, which is different, and it's not expanding their business, but altering their business to meet the requirements of the COVID-19 guidelines, but ask and also agree in writing by signing this document or a letter to us, that they are liable for following the, these outlines that we know the state and government have set up. So I just don't know if we can sit down as, as an entire board and cover all the issues which may come before the board. I just, again, I'm afraid of bureaucracy out of control.
Okay, thank you. Is that, Ally, did you want to respond to Tom's concern?
Nope, that wasn't me, but I understand where Tom is coming from and, and I get it. And I'm, will go any direction that the board wants to head for this.
This is Catherine. I'll just, Tom, I'll make a comment about your concerns. I think in my mind, in defining a procedure, it would be something along the lines of a letter and a sketch, just outlining what they want to do in lieu of, you know, fully surveyed plans and so on. So in a sense, we don't need to, in the definition of the procedure, we don't need to include all of the possible situations that will come up. In a sense, all we're saying that the procedure would be defined in some way like that for the, you know, for the purposes of complying with, with protocols regarding the COVID-19 if a, a commercial establishment needs, what's the word, would normally, under conditions where, would normally need to submit an amended site plan for approval, that under these conditions, a letter and a sketch and a plan can be submitted. And that can be reviewed by the board or the community development department, however we decide. But, but in a sense, we're not saying that we need to accommodate all the possible issues that can come up, but we're just defining a procedure in lieu of a formal site plan approval or amended site plan approval. That's all. So, which would be something like a letter and a sketch and an explanation of what they want to do. With no fees, because it's not a formal site plan approval, so there would be no fees associated with it.
Ally, Tom?
Go ahead, Tom.
I understand, and I don't disagree with you. My concern is that this has to be a partnership between the planning board and an individual business where they petition us with a change in their site plan, and they outline it, as you say, it can be a sketch, not an engineered drawing, but give us an outline of what they want to do. But it also has to be in concert with them making a commitment to the town that they're going to follow the regulations that you and I are so concerned about in terms of safe distancing and all of the other COVID-19. So I, I'd like to see it as a, a contract or a plan, or however you'd like to label it, that a business A says to the planning board through a letter to Ally, this is what we'd like to do, here's a general sketch of it, and by the way, we're going to follow this and we're going to follow the state recommendations, and actually get into a commitment with the town that they'd like to do something differently and just ask the town, the planning board specifically, their site plan, to give approval of, of a way in which they can have a mechanism by keeping their business viable. I just don't know that we can cover, the planning board can cover all of those incidences, incidences that would come forward. One of my concerns is that a restaurant, just as an example, wants to, they normally have 50 people, they want 25 people inside, and just to balance the math, they want 25 people outside. And then the board tries to say, well, you can't block the sideways sidewalk, you can't have cars parked here, there. I don't know if that level has to be put into a contract, because if what they do is not safe, we have mechanisms within the town now, policing and, and other mechanisms, which are going to come along and say, you can't do that. I don't think this board would approve of something that would interfere with public access or the opening of a sidewalk. But every single, just, in every single jurisdiction and every single piece of property i- is different and laid out differently. So I'd like them, the, the business, to, to contract with us and ask us for forgiveness, ask, ask for latitude, and we make a decision through some very minimal guidelines to let them know how they can petition the board to enter into, again, I'm using the word contract, so that we can be supportive of what they're trying to do for the town.
Okay. Another comment? Was that Bob Wirtschaft after?
Yeah, I think that's all well and good, but I, I believe our role right now is to help establish some of the criteria by which decisions can be made. Are we going, are, are we, are we going to have anything to say about the sidewalk itself? Or, or how, how are our drop-off areas going to be set up? And, and, you know, how close can they be to the people that, to tables and things like that? And what's the flow going to be like around your table? And, and is there sufficient room for people to step up into the street and not get hit by somebody driving their car up to, to drop somebody off? So I think these are, I think there are certain criteria. The first one I, I thought, Tom, that you said was, you can't have more people after this than you had capacity before. That's pretty straightforward. But there should be some others, and I think we, to some degree, we have to wait for the, for, for the state to, to make their requirements, although that may push, push us right up to the edge. If we wait, we can anticipate what they're going to say by looking at what the CDC put in their criteria for reopening and begin to, to see how that works for, for our town. So I, I think there's work for us to do to make this easier for each. We don't want each business to have to deal with all the requirements that should be pretty straightforward for, this is what's allowed, this is how we can help you do it, and, and let's get going on that, as opposed to, well, everybody's got to figure out exactly how to write a letter to us to send it to us for our approval. That seems very bureaucratic. And I, I think our, our, the way to help this is to, to try and anticipate as much of that and, and try to put some criteria together that everybody can conform to.
Good. This is Catherine. I just want to comment, it's not so much a comment on what you said, Bob, those are good thoughts, but it occurred to me while you're talking, this is just an interesting aside, that under current conditions and current protocols that we've received from Governor Baker, and again, we don't know how long these will be in place or how they'll be modified, but under the current conditions, none of the site plan approvals that we've approved, for example, for restaurants, are valid, because we approve a certain number of seats in a certain place and a certain number of parking spaces to go with those seats, as an example. And right now, none of that is valid, because they cannot use their place of business in the way that we've approved the site plan. So, so that's just the, the flip side of this whole issue. I don't know how much it pertains to what we have to do, but it's just the, the flip side of understanding. So again, we, let's, I'm just wondering if we can define a process where we can define the process to, in order to define what process we want to put in place, then we'll need to, you know, put that together and then essentially vote on it to put it in place. I'm not sure that we're all in agreement that we want to create a new process. I think Bob Wirtschaft is kind of hearing from you that you think the new process in itself is onerous, that you just want to define the, the guidelines that need to be followed and put those out. Is that correct?
Well, the more that we do of that, I mean, there, the, the plan that came through last night that I think probably has the most merit is the one-way street, Main Street with get rid of the parking and, and move the, move, allow people to move out of their stores onto the, at least partially onto the sidewalk. Well, that, that's going to take some planning. I think we have a role to play in that. And if we, if the plan is done well, then every, every business on Main Street ought to be able to say, okay, I know what I can do within my, expand my business out onto the street. I think the more we can do that, and Main Street is, is clearly the most important, but it's not the only place where this has got to be done. I think we, we, the more of that we can specify in terms of this is what we're looking for, the easier it will be for businesses to say, well, here's my plan. And then at that point, they can go to Katie or to Ally and say, here's my plan. And, and, and I, at that point, I'm happy to let them basically say yes or no, because it conforms with what we're looking at. If it doesn't conform with what we're looking at, then maybe they come back to us or, or a small group of us, but I don't want it to be too complicated. We need to let these businesses get going. If that's
Okay, Tom, this is Catherine. Let me just make one comment in response to Bob. I think that's a good approach personally, that we just define all the parameters and then basically, rather than having each individual business come and, and give us a proposal, that we define what the parameters are, and then, then each business can meet those parameters, and that's just a simple approval process. So I'm sorry, Tom, I interrupted you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tom Gigg. Going along with what Bob is talking about, perhaps to fine tune what I'm trying to express here, is that the board or subset of the board coming to the main board has a, a template for this letter, or the ability to petition the board for waiver, actually, in essence, a waiver to their conditions. If they're asking for a waiver, obviously, we're in control because we don't have to grant a waiver, but maybe, again, to Bob's point, is that what we try to put together with the, the planning department and, and, and the staff is really a template for how this could be accomplished by an individual business in town.
Okay, again, I think what I'm hearing is two approaches that are kind of merging a little bit. One is that they come to us with a plan and we give them a waiver or we have a procedure. The other is we simply define what the template is, so to speak, and then it's that, these are the protocols, you have to be six feet apart, you can expand your restaurant seats outside in order to allow for six feet apart, but you cannot expand, that will not mean you'll be expanding your capacity, you won't be expanding your parking, it won't, you know, and that's what you need to do. And if you do that, then that's okay, and we can just define that clearly, and then it's just a simple procedure, you know, going through community development department, they'll meet all the requirements and they just go ahead. So I see that as one idea. The other idea is more that in lieu of a site plan, amended site plan approval, we have a lighter process that each individual comes to us with their plan and, you know, we take a look at it and, and we approve it, or community development department approves it. So Yes, please go ahead, Art.
Well, I'm a little bit concerned about putting any kind of liability or burden
Well, I'm a little bit concerned about putting any kind of liability or burden on the community development staff. I mean, what you're talking about in some instances could be putting, you know, patrons or pedestrians into an unsafe condition. And that's part of a priority of concern that the board plays a major role on. It's one thing to expand, let's say, in the simplest of cases, an outdoor dining where there's sufficient space that the property has. But if you have a business which is right abutting against the sidewalk, taking over the sidewalk or previous parking space is not necessarily something that would make as much sense from a safety perspective for the patrons when you're putting them out there in the middle of, where there could be traffic flow or whatever. So that puts a burden on the community development staff to take some, dealing with some of the liability exposure associated with that. That certainly falls to our board. I'm a little concerned when we would, when judgments are going to be made or putting people in position to make those type of decisions associated with that. When, they're not going to be black and white issues, they're going to be all gray. And, you know, if you start putting people and taking up parking spaces and putting tables out there and how are you going to protect those people, how are they going to be safe? Who's going to make that decision? I'm a little bit concerned about that. So if we make those decisions, you know, we might be restricting it too much so that we don't put the liability burden on the community development staff. That would be ours, so it's a big bag.
Yeah. This is Catherine, yes, Katie, go ahead.
Hi, if I could, so just a couple of clarifications I'd like to make is, one is, the planning board wouldn't necessarily have the authority over the approvals that would be on, say, the public sidewalks or the townways. That is all going to be to the Board of Selectmen and it wouldn't necessarily fall to the planning board nor the community development department. The planning board, you know, we look at property and what goes on on people's properties and not necessarily outside of, you know, so say in the downtown area. A lot of those decisions will be relating to these issues will be made by the Board of Selectmen. So I just wanted to clarify that for the board members. You know, certainly, you know, we as staff have a lot of experience in looking and we understand when, you know, applicants need to come back before the board and when they don't. And as you mentioned earlier, Catherine, this is really has to do with site plan approval and potential amendments to site plan approval. And so in some instances, there may be a change to a business plan that doesn't actually require any approval by this board because they may not be altering anything on their, you know, the outside of their property. So one of the thoughts that I had is that the HBDC currently has an administrative approval process whereby, I think it's two or three of their board members look at applications that people submit and then they're ratified at the next meeting so that there's an administrative approval process. And we could certainly, whether we could do it quickly enough, I'm not sure, but we could certainly look to do something like that, whereas Ally, you know, would look at a plan or hear from an applicant that'd like to make some changes and she could bring it to one or two board members and, you know, kind of give an update and see if there's any need for any more formal type of, you know, appearance before the board. But then they could just fall to the next planning board. If nobody feels that they need any type of formal review, that it could just fall to a ratification. But I certainly think that the requirements that, that people understand that this is a temporary measure in relation to COVID-19 and that I agree with what Art had said earlier, that if there's, you know, if anybody wants to make these changes permanent, they will have to come back and file a formal amendment to their site plan application. So I think that those are things to keep in mind. I do certainly think that Ally and I can work on something, you know, over the next week or so and try to put something together. I think it will be beneficial, as I said before, to hear where the governor comes down on certain issues. But there are other, you know, boards and committees, as well as the Board of Selectmen, that are going to have to weigh in on these items and it's not all going to fall to the planning board. Only what's going to fall to the planning board is what would be required as an amendment to a site plan approval under the bylaw. So just to kind of keep that in mind for everybody because, you know, we're, you know, would be hopefully looking at the plans, you know, for people potentially, expanding their outdoor seating is what I think we'll see most. But this board will look at that on people's properties, not necessarily within a right-of-way.
Okay, this is Catherine speaking, thank you, Katie, that's, those are really good clarifications to have. And I think also, if I could say, I think this would be a good process to follow if the board agrees, to ask Katie and Ally to begin to draft something that will be workable for the planning board and then we can, we can take a look at the draft. And I would offer that, to do it quickly, that we could, I would offer to schedule a special meeting by teleconference, as we're doing, to take a look at what you've drafted and that could really expedite things. And if you would like, in the interim, you know, before the whole board looks at it, if you'd like to have a teams call with a couple of board members, we could do that. Or we could try to schedule a special meeting with the whole board as soon as you feel you have something that's workable. So I'm going to suggest that that's a course of action we can take if the board agrees with that. So I'll just ask the board members if you have comments on just taking that course of action in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish right now. Any comments or can I, I could go through the board and see if everyone's all right with this? Tom Gagin?
No, I agree with you that the staff, particularly Katie and Ally, could draft something and whether the chair chooses or Ally or Katie would like to have input from a smaller subset of the board, I think that can be decided also. But certainly starting the process with the, with the planning department makes a lot of sense.
Okay, and Art, how are you feeling? Just about a steps of action to accomplish what we need to do.
Your steps of action are fine with me, Catherine, that works.
All right, great, and Warren, how do you feel?
I think your steps of action are fine with me, but I think that if we're focusing on something which is meant to be, quote, "temporary", I think we need to realize that the governor has already indicated four phases that we're going to be going through, so temporary could easily be measured in years. And I think what the spirit of this is, is that if site plans are going to be changed as a result of compliance with requirements or recommendations related to COVID-19, that we're trying to avoid the expense and the time required for compliance by businesses. And somehow or other, we need to convey that and try and ensure that we don't somehow require formal, which would require fees, site plan amendments or reviews as we come up with a, quote, "temporary" that could be measured in years and changing over those years, by the way, such that we don't impose yet even more regulatory burden on the businesses that we're trying to spare the regulatory and the bureaucratic burden.
Okay, thank you. How about Bob Wurzhafter? How do you feel about the steps of action that I've just defined? To, just to accomplish, to get a template that we would then consider and vote on?
Sorry, I'm.
Are you muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine, I think that's a good step forward.
And Bob Dubus?
Yeah, I'm Bob Dubus, yeah, I'm on board with what you guys are saying. I think that you should put something together and then bring it back to the board and we can hash it out. Let's just make it easy and simple.
Okay, and I'm going to propose too that Katie and Ally, I don't know what your timeframe is, Katie mentioned within the next week or so, that I'll propose to the board that we would be open to having an additional special meeting by teams so that we could take a look at this quickly in advance of our May 26 meeting. But that, and I, you know, I don't have a time to suggest. What about, anyway, it might depend on how Ally and Katie progress with the draft. Does that work for everybody? Yeah, is that Ally?
Hi. Hi, yeah, I'll work with Katie and we'll put together a draft and if, you know, we can accomplish that within the week, we could potentially have a special meeting or we can consider extending our May 24th, I believe, 26th, yeah, 26th meeting, if that works for the board. But I can always email out and if we get done with the policy in time, I can always email the board asking if they'd be willing to have a special meeting.
Okay, that sounds great, I think that's a, that's a good course of action to follow. And I did just want to respond, this is Catherine, I'm sorry, I forgot to announce myself. I just wanted to respond to some points that Warren made. It is true, we're kind of going day by day and we're seeing what the governmental recommendations are and how they change and how they develop and I think there's truth in what you say, that we don't really know how the future will be or how long a new way of living will be in place or how that will change over time. And just the point that I made is, this may be long-range planning, but it's possible that we will need, if this kind of situation does continue on a longer term rather than a shorter term basis, we may need to consider revising our bylaws to accommodate new protocols in place. But that's just a possibility, but I just wanted to respond to Warren's thoughts in that way. So, so good, I think we're set, Katie and Ally, we have, we'll work on a draft and it's in absolutely able hands. And as soon as we can, the board will convene again to take a look at that draft. So I think unless there's any other comments, we'll, we'll consider that discussion finished for now. And I'll just move on, yeah, is that all right with everyone? All right, I will just ask, I'll go on to the last two points on our agenda. And I don't think there are any members of the public in the meeting, but I'll just ask if there's any public comments on any matters that were discussed this evening. And then we have chairman's comments. So I'll be brief because I know we've been on for a long time. I'll just briefly comment that right now, I think most of you know that our guideline is, is that we just deal with purely regulatory matters. That's the guideline for the moment, so we've not been considering long-range planning at the moment. Nevertheless, Ally and I still touch base on it and when that opens up for us to continue, we still have the contract in place with Cape Cod Commission regarding the form-based code for West Chatham. So we're still looking to continue with that when we are able to. Right now, our guideline is that as a board, we just focus on regulatory matters. So I just wanted to mention that, that we haven't forgotten that. And also, your vice chair very kindly reminded me that we, that we did lose a planning board member, Stacy Farber left us, I guess it was last December. So we're still needing to replace her to have another planning board member. And we did just want to make an appeal to anyone in the public who hears this broadcast that if you would like to volunteer and join the planning board, we do have a place open, a vacancy. And your interest can be expressed on the town website. There's a section called Volunteer Opportunities and if you go to that, there is a way to enter your information in the talent bank. And then if you're interested in the planning board, you can declare that at that time and then certainly your application will be considered. So we just wanted to make that request generally, that we are missing a planning board member and very much would like to add a new planning board member. So, Tom, did you have any comments about that or?
No, Tom Gagin, no, thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. So if there is no other discussion or comments from any board members, I would invite someone to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Art Sprou, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Warren Shane, I second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, so Tom Gagin?
I approve.
And Art Sprou?
Art Sprou approve.
And Warren Shane?
I approve.
And Bob Wurzhafter?
I approve.
And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And this is Catherine Helfgren and I approve, so our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your participation.
I just want to, sorry, this is Ally, just want to note the time, it is 6:16 PM.
Thank you, Ally.